The city council is reviewing a planned or own parcel or most end of the city on Second Avenue from single family to plan development. They declared their intent to act as lead agency on June and sent notices to all involved and interested agencies back then. They are the lead agency because they have the most of power to enact that change, basically. The zoning board will most likely see this project for variances in the future and should have been included as an involved agency. They were not notified. They were, I think, the only one left off of that notification. So I just want to put it, alert the zoning board to the fact. I'll keep you informed as, as the project progresses. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Strikman. Okay, so perhaps now we should take the attendance, please?
Yes, Jack McCann. John Normile.
Present.
Mark Palazzi. Katie McLaren.
Excellent.
Chair Conroy.
Here.
Okay, so we have four members present?
That is correct.
And the first item of business is to adapt the meeting minutes from the March 2nd meeting. Do we have any, do we have a motion to accept these minutes, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, John makes the motion. Jack McCann is second. All in favor, say aye. Post carried. Okay, our first case, PLZBA 2022 0032, 317 8th Street. A use variance and area variance. This applicant Danielle Doughty proposes to convert a two-family residential property into a three-family residential property. And perhaps for that property, we need a use variance. I just said that. An area variance. All right, is Danielle present? Okay, you want to come up to the podium, please? Introduce yourself, your address, and what you want to do.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm Danielle Doughty. Pleased to meet you all. Here for a request to rezonate currently two-unit property to a three-unit. I just recently, my address is 317 8th Street for New York. And the purpose for the request is because I recently purchased the property. It is in a dilapidated state. It looks like it should have three units in it. So I'd like to have active use of all of them for residential occupancy.
Why do you think it looks like it should have three units in it? Looks kind of small to me.
Yes, from the street view, it is.
Yeah.
It looks like it's just a story.
Right.
The house is built, so three sides on the back, which is like the third floor. And it's full-size, that you can have full-size windows. And there's already, it looks like there was, it, it looks like it should have been that way from the start.
And, yeah, do you know that it was, or was not?
I just, I just took ownership in July of 2021.
You say you purchased it in July of 2021? Okay, so that, okay, some months ago.
I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to do anything illegally. I'd like to have the full operating capacity of the property in its legal state, if you guys, if you don't mind moving.
I do have to say that I appreciate. Can you hear me? I appreciate that in your application, before we had to ask, you provided all of your financials. So, you know, we don't really have to question whether or not, you know, we don't have to question that because I feel like you provided a very good picture of what it would look like with two units versus three. So I just, I really appreciate that.
Oh, it's my pleasure. I'm glad I can give you as much information as possible because I'm aware that, you know, that there are a number of places that operate in less than desirable fashion according to the city rules and regulations. I have no desire to start out that way. I'd like to start out clean slate and make everything legal. But it does change the operating budget if I'm not able to operate with three units. And it would cause a deficit in my budget or my projected budget.
So did you, did you purchase this property from an owner or from the city or whatever?
I purchased it as a city foreclosure.
As a city foreclosure, okay. And at the time?
At the time, it was presented as a duplex.
Okay, it was presented as a duplex and that's what you, you bought it with the idea that you would make it a duplex?
No, because when I went into the building, it has three units. Like, the house next door, I'm at the neighbors. They have a third unit in the basement. There was somebody coming out of the door.
Right.
I was under the impression there may have been some, maybe miscommunication between the owner and the city. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to put the two together because I wasn't able to communicate with previous owner.
Right.
So maybe some things get mixed up, maybe things are applied for, they're not actually completed. So upon further research, I discovered that the city actually does have it on record as a two-unit. But then when I checked with the National Grid, they confirmed that they had a basement, a first floor, and a second floor use.
Oh, okay, well, that certainly makes a difference.
Yeah, historically, if that's the way that the property's been used, and I'm looking at three units, it just made sense to me when National Grid said that, that maybe the previous owner operated as a three-unit without approval.
Okay.
I don't want to follow in those footsteps.
Right.
We're not clear the exact history of the property. We think internally, we were having this discussed a few hours ago, and we think it's very possible that the previous owner, prior to the city foreclosing on a property, this is some time ago, may have illegally converted the basement into an apartment. But I don't know if Danielle, I don't know if you were able to enter the property before you purchased it?
Yes, I was. The unfortunate part about the situation, it was covered in garbage. So it was hard for me to move around on first and second floor, much less get in because the garbage restricted me from going downstairs until I got it cleaned out after I purchased it. And the entry door was blocked off with a board, so I couldn't access that lower unit until I actually took ownership.
That's, that's kind of the nature of some of the city foreclosures. It's hard for prospective buyers to get in and fully assess the building. And so it seems like when Danielle was able to finally get into the building and, and get a full picture of it, there's, there's three kitchens, three bathrooms, that kind of stuff, so.
Okay, do we have anybody here in favor of this proposal? Anybody here? Okay, we have any questions from the board for the applicant? Okay, go ahead, John.
The access to the basement unit, is that through the regular front door or is it?
There's a side door. As a matter of fact, when you go down the, if I'm facing the building, the left side of this, there's a stairwell, there's a door there. And on the back, there was a door, but it's dilapidated, so it has to be totally restructured.
Okay.
Okay, so if we have no further questions, does it make sense for us to do a use variance? Because if that doesn't pass, then there's no point discussing the area variances? Does that make sense?
That is correct. There should be a motion as to the use variance first.
And then we'll move on to the area if it passes.
Correct. And then I did pass around to everybody.
Right.
Criteria for each of the motions.
Which we are most appreciative of, thank you. Okay, so if we have no questions on the use variance, do we, we need a SECR?
Yes, we do. Madam Chair, I move, my notes here, for ZB A 2022 0032, that the board finds this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available, how much to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second? Okay, on the motion, all in favor? Aye.
Carried.
Okay, do we have a motion on the use variance? Okay.
Madam Chair, for PLZBA 2022 0032, this, I move to make a positive motion to approve the use variance. I think that the applicant sufficiently showed us that she cannot obtain a reasonable return with the allowed use of units. I, in, in stark contrast, I think this is only going to add to the neighborhood, it's not going to alter the essential character. And the hardship is not necessarily self-created because like we discussed, the applicant was not aware of the full, you know, scope of the building on purchase. So I make a positive motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Jack McCann, seconds? Okay, and on the motion, John Normile? Jack McCann?
Yes, to approve.
Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve. And Katie McLaren?
Yes.
Okay, so that being the case, you're halfway home. All right, now we need the area variance for the density and the parking. So would you like to address those issues?
In this particular circumstance, the parking may be challenging. Well, there's front street parking, but as far as creating additional parking would be challenging because there's a very narrow side on each side of the building, simply large enough for a walkway. I mean, if it were wider, I would have no problem putting in like a driveway, additional parking in the rear because the land allows enough space for it. Unfortunately, due to the size of the lot and the fact that the lots on both sides are owned by other people, that I can't encumber upon, it's, it would make it difficult for me to create a driveway and additional parking.
Right.
So in this moment, it would just be the front curbside parking.
Okay.
But it does stretch from the building to the corner because it is on the lot, there's nothing else there on the other side.
Right, right. Do we have any questions in regard to the area variance to the applicant?
No, and, you know, looking at this, it's deceiving because it tells us that you're seeking relief more than what you have, but in reality, it's going from two to three.
Yeah, the density is based on units per acre.
Right.
We're talking about a lot that is, that is less than a tenth of an acre in size.
Right.
The numbers get.
Right. So it, on, at first glance, it looks like a very substantial relief being sought, but in reality, I, I don't, I don't believe that it is.
Okay, so we already know that there's no one here to speak in favor or opposition of this proposal. We've all had our questions answered, so can we have a motion? We've already done the SECR. So we just need a motion on the area variance. Two of them for the density and the parking. One, one, one variance, though.
It would, you, you can take one vote.
That's what I meant.
The one motion would be for both.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Madam Chair, I would move that for PLZDA 2022 0032, that we approve the area variances. One for the relief of the 29 units per acre for maximum density and the other for the parking variance for the relief of the three spaces. Again, I do not believe any undesirable change is going to be made to the neighborhood or, or any detriment to nearby properties. In fact, it's just the opposite, it's going to approve, improve that part of the neighborhood greatly. Again, I think the applicant demonstrated that she's not going to be able to, see, she's not going to be able to get benefit by another feasible means. And I do not believe that the, either one of the variances are substantial.
Okay, we have a second on that motion? John Normile? And on the motion, Jack McCann?
Yes.
John Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve. Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
Okay, good luck, you're all set.
Thank you so much.
Okay. The next case is PLZBA 2022 0031, 162 9th Street. Use variance and area variances requested. The applicant, Mark Anmuji, proposes to convert a two-family residential property into a three-family residential property. So applicant present?
Yes, he is.
Oh, hello.
Hi, how are you?
Okay. So would you like to tell us what you want to do, please?
Sure. My name is Mark Anmuji of 55 Woodside Avenue down in New Jersey. I am a commuter to New York for work. I am a buyer for the unit at 162 9th Street. We are seeking a variance on this legal non-conforming three-unit dwelling on an R2 zone. So this is currently listed for sale as a three-unit dwelling. The current owner finished the first two dwelling and received a certificate of occupancy on it and left the basement unfinished. So essentially, I am planning to purchase this unit to complete the basement for my own personal use so that I could stay there while going to work. And intent here is also to have the three-unit dwelling reinstated. All modifications we're going to be doing, it's going to be just an interior and not the exterior at all. And there is ample parking space in the street that, that, that basically we could pretty much use. There's also like a concrete area in the back, which also could be, could serve as an overflow for parking if need be.
Okay, so could you tell me, please, what you're going to do to the basement? I mean, like, is it a basement basement now, did you say, or was it all kind of a apartment, but that's okay? Because Aaron's going to speak for you.
I will. I just will mention that according to our records, code enforcement's records, this is a three, three-year residence.
Oh, it's a three-year residence, okay. All right, should I answer that question?
To get this use variance in order to solidify this non-conforming use.
Right, okay, all right. That answers the question, he saved the day for you.
Thanks, Aaron.
Okay, so that was my question. I don't know if anybody else has any questions for this applicant?
Not a question, just a comment that it's, I think it's great that you would actually be living there because we have too many absentee landlords.
Thank you.
That's true.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interject, but.
That's all right.
I just want to note that specifically, there's, again, a request for a use variance and a request for an area variance. And one of the factors for a use variance is that the applicant cannot obtain a reasonable turn, return with any allowed use. The law actually requires that it must be established and demonstrated by competent financial evidence. And I don't believe that there was any, so I think that the applicant does have to satisfy that requirement before this board can move forward.
Okay, Mark, did you get that?
Yes, I, yes, I did.
Could, could we do the variance with the contingency that he will present it? Or does he have to, we have to wait for him to bring it and come back? It has to be like, you know, it's one thing to say, I have a financial hardship, but you got to prove it.
Okay.
You know?
So for a proper record, this, this ZB A would have to actually make a finding as to whether or not the applicant can or cannot obtain a reasonable return with any of the allowed uses. So if he wants something that's outside of the allowed uses, he has to be able to show why he can't obtain a reasonable return with a two-family house. And if there's no competent financial evidence before this board, this board either can't make that determination or would have to find in the negative as to that, and he has to meet each and every criteria.
Or it's that we.
Or he can.
We could table it, but what, what do we do with the fact that, as Aaron said, it was a three-family?
Well, it was a legal non-conforming use, but it's.
It's a.
Didn't you say that, Aaron? It wasn't.
It is existing non-conforming use. I wouldn't say it's, 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 I wouldn't say it's a legal non-conforming use.
It could be grandfathered in, is that?
But I mean, it was a three-family house, is what you said.
If I'm not mistaken, I know, Mark, I don't want to speak for you, but I think, I think this is a requirement that his bank might have imposed on him for the lending.
That is correct.
What, what was the requirement that you?
That it be changed back.
That it be changed back or no?
The use variance and not continue this non-conforming use. They wanted to see, in order to give him the loan against the property, they wanted to see that it was.
Right, but wasn't, wasn't it, didn't you say it was down as a three-family?
Correct. And some banks will take a letter from us saying it's an existing non-conforming use and they're fine with that. Other lending institutions have more stringent requirements and they need that a use variance actually be obtained for that non-conforming use.
Okay, and we're not allowed to give you the use variance unless you can show us that financially you can't make a go of it with the two-family. You know, you need the third family in, or this, yeah, the third unit in order to be able to afford the property. Well, John?
Can you rely on the bank's opinion as the lender that the income from a third unit would be sufficient as, with competent financial evidence?
If you have information from the bank, you can, it's the board's assessment as to whether or not it's competent.
So, so if Mark were to obtain a letter from his lender, prospective lender, saying, "We would not approve this loan for a two-family, but we would for a three," would that be, would that be sufficient perhaps or no?
It, it could be. I mean, I can't speak for the board as to what.
But you can say that, that it's, it's not unacceptable.
Correct.
Yeah. All right, you got that, Mark? Maybe you got it in your hand?
I'm, I'm basically taking notes, so pretty much, so the request here is that I need to get a letter from my lender that states that this is, that essentially they need the variance to be approved, the loan, is that it? Or did I get something wrong?
Yes. You got it right.
Okay.
So, that, while that being the case, can we just table it till next month? Is that okay with you, Mark?
We haven't waited on this since, I think, September, October, I want to say. We haven't really closed. This is March now. This is the last piece left of this loan. So is it possible to?
But it's April.
Well, I guess this is April, I'm sorry.
Hang on, we got a question over here that, we're discussing it.
Sure.
No, I just, no.
Okay.
No. And it's that you didn't know that that had to be provided at the time of application, but at this point, it's either we table it or it's a no. And clearly, you don't want to know.
No. We don't want to know at all. All right, if there's no alternative, definitely, then we will table then and get the information and come back, better than a no.
Okay, good. Do we have a motion to table? Jack McCann? Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, see you next month, hopefully with your letter in hand.
All righty, thank you.
Okay, yep.
Okay, our next case. PLZBA 2022 0035, 15 Northern Drive. Beats Happening Center Commercial is here for a use variance. The applicant, Sarah Saresta, is proposing to utilize an albacan building for the sale of automobiles, requiring a use variance. Sarah, that would be you. Come up and introduce yourself, please, and tell us what you want to do.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sarah Saresta, but I would like to call my husband because he hasn't more than a day, if that's okay with you guys, talking about me.
So.
Can you just introduce yourself, please?
My name is Sayed Munkah. I'm Sarah's husband. And we are, we signed a contract on that property on 15 Northern Drive, and we are looking to put up a small dealership there for retail cars.
Okay. And you know the criteria that. You know the criteria you have to meet for use variance, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and do we have any, any information on why you can't just go with any of the allowed uses in that district? Why you feel the need for the car dealership?
Because I have experience in that profession, me and my wife, we, that's what we know. I mean, that's what we like to do. Plus, I mean, the space-wise, the building structure, it's so tiny that all the allowed uses, I mean, I went through all the details and I did, I couldn't find anything that we can put there. It, it's very small and it's very appropriate because for car dealership, all you need is a very small office building. We are not going to be making any physical changes or repairs or anything, no extensions, nothing, just we'll be using that small building as an office and have cars around the building. So our expectation is not to expand or be too big, just, you know, run as a small neighborhood.
Does anybody have any, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Anybody from the board before we go any further? Or Jack?
Are you planning on adding some type of garage or anything like that to repair the cars?
No.
Thank you.
Katie, did you have a question?
Yeah, you say you've already purchased a property?
No, we are under contract.
Okay.
Contingency to the.
On this?
On the.
Okay. So. Okay.
I have a couple of other comments.
Okay, Aaron?
This property has been taken for a while. Yeah. And the previous use was a fueling station. Most of that, that infrastructure's been removed and remediated, but given the, this lot is undersized for the zone it's in, E3 commercial. I think the minimum lot size is a half acre or 25,000 square feet, something along those lines, which this is quite. And having a previous use as a gas station would make excavation for a foundation or for a basement tricky with the potential for some soil remediation and things of that nature. So this use would make, this would make use of the existing structure and essentially not have to touch most of that lot. It would just be asphalt and for the storage of the vehicles.
So my thought is that throughout the application, there are some comments about managed, you know, about your financial, you know, selling four cars a month, that kind of thing, but that is not by our standards competent financial evidence, which we would need for use this.
Just give an idea that, you know.
Yes, but we, in order to rule, in order to vote, we need to have, for a use variance, we need to have competent financial information as to why you could not obtain a reasonable return within allowed use.
Okay, and so what, what should I provide? What type of information are we?
Well, if you were to be able to provide the specs of what, what kind of income it could generate now versus with the use that you're seeking versus what kind of income or what costs would be associated with an allowed use, such as, like Aaron just mentioned, that putting in a structure with a basement, there would be a lot of remediation because it was used as a gas station previously. You need to show us why financially, the only thing you can do with this is use it as a car dealership in order for us to vote to approve the change of use.
Might mention our financial setting that that is what we can afford or?
No.
You're, you're really, what you're, you're looking for is almost a pro forma of the various allowed uses on the, on the property. So, I mean, I can go through a list of.
Say it was like a hairstyling place or something, that's probably allowed. By the time you got to putting the renovations into that piece of property to provide, to make it into a hairstyling place, that would be big enough to give you an income from a hairstyling place, you'd be spending a gazillion dollars because you'd have to, you know, check down below the ground for the gas pumps and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, it's just would be outrageously expensive for you in order to do anything now. And as you said, what you want to do is just going to require that little building that's already there. You don't have to do anything but put in your desk and chair. You know what I mean? But you want to put in something else that is the nail. You know what I mean? But you want to put in something else that is the nail salon, Dollar Tree, whatever. You know, you can't put anything there. And as Aaron said, the property is really small besides.
Quarter of a square feet.
Right, but the problem is, it's, it's easy for me to say, oh, it, it would cost you a whole lot of money to make it into something that would go there. But you gotta have that down in, in writing. You know, I mean, you gotta figure it, you gotta figure, well, by the time we got through building, you know, making the building bigger, da-da-da-da-da, it would cost us sixty-two thousand dollars, say, uh, above and beyond to pay the renovations. Whereas if we get to keep it as it is now, it's not going to be a financial hardship for us. Is that a decent enough explanation? So you understand what I mean? There's really minimal expense. Uh, and, and I know you're right, that would be incurred to, to put in this auto dealership, whereas to put in something that is allowed in the, in the um zone would be outrageously expensive and you would never want to do that, nor would anybody else. Yeah.
Okay, I mean, our closing was between and the, you know, the sellers, they were not uh more time, so that, you know, is, is there a way that I can submit something prior to that date? Because fifteen April was the date. It's either we get the variance or if not, then deal is off. So that was the contingency. And they, they, they cannot go beyond fifteen April. I tried my best to get more time, but they are not going to give us more time. They just want to move on. So if there is.
Well, I don't know why they really want to move on, only because it's been vacant for a gazillion years. I should think, and that's not your fault. I'm just saying. They can be telling you that, but in the end, I'm sure they're not going to say, go away because I got fourteen more people who want to buy this place because nobody wants it.
Would, would a letter from this, would, would some kind of notice from the city saying that the meeting has been tabled be enough to hold them off?
I can try. I mean.
I bet you it would.
I, I, you know, I said that, I'm not sure, but the price was really good. The property was never put for sale. So they put it pretty cheap. And that's how like I jumped in and I was, I just took it for the price they were asking. So I, I, I have no idea, but I can try the letter and I was hoping like it is a way that I can submit what you asked for prior to next meeting. If that's how it works, I don't know.
That we can look at it ahead of time? I mean, that's, either way, we still have to meet.
Okay.
Yes, Jack.
Did you have, did you say you had to the fifteenth?
Yes.
So our motion here tonight would be, uh, if we table the matter, you could bring it to the bank. With the fact that we tabled the matter and that may.
It's not the bank though, it's the realtor, the seller.
Okay, so you're, you're not going to go through the bank at all?
No.
So we're okay, right?
I mean, without that, the board really can't act. So if he can get it to us, and I'm sure, you know, one of our departments can work to get him a letter. And hopefully that'll be sufficient for the seller to hold off and keep the offer open and the contract open until this board asks.
Thank you, Castle.
Okay, does that sound good? So we have to table this one also? Okay.
Again, I can't tell you what motions to make, but if the board.
But that's where, that's the point we're at. We're tabling until the next meeting. Right, you have to meet all the criteria for the use variance, but the big, the big one is um the financial part of it.
So, you know. I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Do we have a second? John, okay, all in favor? I oppose, Carrie. Okay. Okay, the next case. PLZBA twenty twenty-two zero zero two-nine, three fifty-six Third Street. Urban neighborhood residential medium to high density and area variance is required. The applicant James Kennedy proposes to renovate this fourth family residential property. By putting in a carriage house, I do presume. Oh, James, oh, I saw your name on the Zoom thing on the TV there. Right, Mr. Kennedy?
Hey, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Uh, yeah, so it's currently a, a two-family. I want to convert it to a four-family. Um, not putting carriage house in, um, changing, adding spring curter to the property, um, removing the second means internal egress, which is internal staircase. And, and making it um two, two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units with parking in the rear um for tree cars.
Why do I think you put it in a carriage house?
It doesn't, I don't know. I mean, the carriage house, the parking with EV charging is, is better for me than, than a carriage house and the cost of.
Forget it, forget it. I got, no, we got so many cases here. That was thirty-seven First Street. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Right down from Lady's funeral home. I know just right where you are. Okay, I was there. Tell me again why you have to um make this into a four-family?
Uh, um, I don't, I, you know, honestly, like, there is, there is no have to. Um, it's, I would like to, to be clear, this is not um um a necessity, but I have found that uh there's way more demand for smaller units. Um, and that the tenants in smaller units are more professional um and, and have less turnover. So that is what I would like to do. Like, the word being like, you know, um, so it's at your discretion. Um, as to if I can do that or not.
Okay, so tell me, how, how many are there now? How many units are there now? Tell me.
Well, it's, it's a partially renovated building I bought. Um, and there are, it's, it's, it's not habitable. You can't live in there right now. So there, there are two units, first floor and second floor. Um, the basement is not a unit, never will be a unit. It'll be purely mechanical. Um, so the, the the idea would be to, to make it into, you know, uh, two, two units on each floor. It is big enough for that. This is not like squishing people into, the units will have washer dryers, they'll have central air, central heat, et cetera, et cetera. Um, hardwood floors, proper kitchens, um center will be parking with EV charging out the back. So it's just a matter of what supply and demand I'm finding. I, I have one other building in Troy. And um, I'm finding that, that um smaller, smaller units just are way more in demand.
Okay, do we have anybody, uh, have any questions from the board before we go any further? Do we have anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, so now it's up to us, I guess. I'll, I'll be honest with you. I, I went and looked at that and I thought, oh my God, four. This place is like small to begin with. But you know what I mean? I'm, I'm saying, no.
But I, I, I tell you what, because I understand what I'm asking is relatively, pardon me, relatively unreasonable. So what, what I, what I would be.
It's unreasonable. I just threw up with, you know, I mean, when you look at something, just looking at it, I'm saying you want to cram two more apartments into this building that it's just small compared to.
Well, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk on your side and say, you're right, but also, also you're not right. So what I would be prepared to do is I suggest you table this and let me with a, with a nod towards favoring it, let me.
Next month, maybe thirteenth. That's not a good idea. Um, I mean, if we have some, you don't have to prove the financial part of it. You only have to prove the, you only need to explain the area variance, which is much less.
Okay.
A test than the use variances. So it's not like, uh, the people before you, because they want to go out of your, their you want to do is allow in that zone, if in fact you can meet the restrictions on the lot area, et cetera. Now, the lot area, what's required is four thousand feet. Uh, you have thirty-two fifty, so what you're asking for is a perimeter of seven hundred and fifty square feet. That's, that's not a whole lot.
Yeah.
Speaking, right? The width is sixty feet on a property lot width and so you need thirty-five. I don't know. What does anybody else think? Am I just dragging on here or? You think it's a lot?
Not, not in comparison, I, well, I mean, I'm just thinking in comparison to four thousand.
Surely, yes, I asked you if there's a question. Yes, by all means.
Mr. Kennedy, were you before this board before regarding?
I was. Yes, sorry.
Who, why?
Regarding your carriage house?
No, no, I was before the board. I was the guy, I knocked down the church and just on Second Avenue a year and a half ago. So I was before the board to allow you, allow me to not, to demolish that church.
Well, so I say no, we weren't here, huh?
I was thinking of the one that we had where the carriage house was up. At that time, we were debating whether or not we could continue with the carriage house. That was two years ago.
Oh, wow.
No, I, I was, don't even, I was here, as I said, for the church on Second Avenue. Uh, you guys were, were great. I think I did everything that was asked. Or Second Street, pardon me, Second Avenue, Second Street, sorry.
Yeah, I don't think you were here. All right, well, in any event, um I don't know. To me, I don't know, you think seven hundred and fifty square feet is a lot of feet? The required lot area is four thousand and this one is thirty-two fifty. I mean, I don't know.
Another way to think about it is the, the lot is eighty percent as large as it should be. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's not four thousand square feet, but it's eighty percent of that.
Yeah.
The, 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 he's looking for is less than fifty percent of the.
Right, and that's.
Right, that's, yeah, I mean, that's. Yeah.
You know, and then the, and then the lot width is, is a function of the number of units, just like, just like anything else, just like the lot area, just like that.
Um, as far as the parking spaces go, because you are actually creating spaces.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm moving the, the, the back fence in, so I mean, this is a long play, but, uh, you know, we're probably away from needing EV charging, but I'm, I'm starting to put it in every property because of the strip, the upcoming stress on the grid. Um, so moving the parking spaces in, take, taking that twenty foot off the property at the back makes, makes sense to me in the, in the long term, so. Especially that, that far from the, that downtown Troy, you know, it's not, it's not in the historic district, right? So that's walking.
Right, right. Okay, do we have any further discussion? I, I don't know.
Oh, the other thing I just want to say, and this is none of this, you know, eh, eh, on that street, you know, I, I could, I can, I can walk up and down. And what you have is you have rentals, rentals of students, which is a very good market and I encourage you. Uh, but those are, you know, three bedrooms, put them in there, they'll trash the apartment, no one cares, they'll move out, more students will move in the next year. What I really want is long-term young professionals and I'm finding from the building that I currently own on Second Street, which is the two forty-second, um, that its demand is for smaller units. And those tenants, they, they pay, they work in the neighborhood, um, and their, their goal is always the same to buy, which is great, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. So. Right, go ahead.
Uh, Madam Chair, I would move that for ZBA twenty twenty-two zero zero twenty-nine. That board find us to propose to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project does not expect to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second? Okay, all um in favor? I oppose, Carrie. Do we have a motion on the uh application?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Can we do all four with one vote?
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion on the uh, the four area variances. That uh, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion, uh, the affirmative to approve them. And this is based on balancing of the, of the factor. Certainly in regards to an undesirable change, it sounds like the property owner is taking a long-term view in that he's uh, he's including parking into his plan to an area that's kind of stressed parking. It seems to also take the long-term view of the type of tenants you can attract to the neighborhood by having the larger number of smaller units. The uh, this is also balancing that that the uh, the request variance is not substantial. And my opinion, taking everything on balance that I've heard, everything that was submitted in the application, that it will not have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. All this in mind, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
And do we have a second? Jack McCann seconds and on the motion. Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
Jack McCann?
Yes, to approve.
Kathy Conroy, yes to approve. John Runile? Okay, so there you go, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you guys. Thank you so much. Uh, good luck tonight.
Okay, our next case, PLZBA twenty twenty-two zero zero three-four, thirty-two Manning Avenue. Single-family residential requests an area variance. The applicant, Robert Lanchock, proposes to construct a utility shed on his property. Jack McCann?
Madam Chairwoman, I uh, I have no choice but to recuse myself on this PLZBA twenty twenty-two zero zero thirty-four. Based on the fact that I've known both of these families for fifty years, they've lived right across the street from me.
Okay.
It would be a.
So we don't want to, them shoveling their snow on your property when uh. Okay. Oh, yes, I was going to say that. Because Jack needed to recuse himself, and Mark isn't uh here tonight, we only have three uh members present, which means you have to get all three of our votes in order to have it approved. Um, if you want, you can wait until next month. And when I would assume Mark would be back, and then we go two to two and refresh my memory with what a two to two does. Does either one of you recall?
When you say two to two, you mean?
Two yes, two no.
There would have to be a three to one.
So you'd have to be a three to one in order to, um, so you could get one person to vote negatively and still get your variance, but that would be up to you. I don't know if you want to wager, if you want to give it a shot with the three of us. Okay. Sounds like you're like on Price is Right or something, you know what I mean? I'm making my decision. I'm going tonight. Okay, go ahead. Introduce yourself and tell us what you want to do, please.
My name is Robert Lanchek. I live at thirty-two Manning Ave. It's my wife Lori. Um, we are here seeking an area variance of eleven feet to put a prefabricated utility shed at top of my driveway.
On top of your driveway? I mean.
Next to the house.
Next to the house in what is now your driveway, you're going to put a shed, part of your driveway?
Yep.
Okay.
The top half.
The top half, meaning closest to your backyard?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, now you probably know that we got um a correspondence from your neighbor.
Well, I found out tonight, yes.
Pardon me?
I found out when I got here, yes.
And of course, the name escapes me, but um, I don't know if anybody else has the name. Bizios, Mr. Miss Bizio, right. Now, they were concerned about where their, I mean, I read it, but I didn't print it out, so I don't have it with me, but um okay, if this is the property, where, where do the Bizios live? Okay, and so where your car? Right.
Yeah, could you, you have to speak into the mic for the, for those at home. Yeah, you can take it with you. Okay. So right here now is a fence. Um, so it's good, the carport's going to start there and it's going to come down to about ten feet from the front of the house.
The carport, if they were put in the shed.
That's where the carport was. We used that, we had a permitted carport there. When we got the driveway done, um, we got rid of the carport.
Okay.
So right here is the area we're going to put it. So the driveway's eighteen feet wide, okay? Um, the carport, uh, carport, the utility shed is twelve by thirty and we're going to keep it one foot off the house, on the side of the house.
And so that's where the variance is. It, it is not on the side of the property that.
Correct.
Bizios live on.
Correct.
The variance is, is actually the separation between a principal structure. Correct. The variance is, is actually the separation between a principal structure.
Right.
Correct, and we actually spoke on the phone, and I was, I was saying, you know, you can avoid this variance by simply attaching the structure. I wasn't aware it was prefabricated.
Oh, okay.
So it's going to arrive on, and, and be installed, uh, right there, so he, he, he doesn't have the opportunity to connect that to his, to his structure.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
But, correct, there's no, um, there's no issue in terms of side setback.
Okay.
Okay, now wait a minute. Accessory structure, oh, okay, all right, all right. It's just between the accessory structure and the principal structures, but the issue is, not that it's too close to their property. That's not the case at all, okay? Because, you know, I mean, you know, nobody wants to see somebody's neighbor. I mean, I don't want to see somebody's neighbor being unhappy with what you're gonna do, if in fact what you're gonna do is gonna impact them in any way, but basically, it's not.
Right.
Other than the fact that they might not be happy with it, but.
Well, if they had chosen to build an actual garage, um, on the house.
Well, excuse me, but is that?
A lot of.
So that's, that's the photo that, that he was referring to earlier, the carport.
That was your carport?
That's from 2011, yeah.
Yeah, but that was the carport?
Yes, ma'am.
And the house to the right is theirs?
Yeah.
Okay, and so this isn't gonna take up any more room than your carport?
No.
It's just gonna be closer to your house?
Yeah.
Got it? Okay.
It's gonna be pushed back.
Right, 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 got it. All right. So we know that Mr. and Mrs. Bizio, we had their, um, their, uh, letter, and do we have anybody else to speak? I shouldn't say anybody else. Do we have anybody to speak in favor of this proposal? And anybody, Mr. and Mrs. Bizio, Mr. Bizio?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Yep, very clearly.
Okay, great. Um, our concern is the size of the proposed utility shed. How far to the end of the driveway, which is on our side of the house, will that be?
Okay, so you're talking about how far towards, um, your house?
Correct, yes.
All right, just take the questions, they won't have an answer at the end, right? Do you have any other questions?
Um, well, well, I guess the, the basic question is, will the utility shed be the five feet from where our property line ends? That's required.
Okay, so we'll take that. When the utility shed to your property line is another question, and do you have any other questions?
Do you have more questions?
Basically, you just don't want it to impact your life.
Correct.
Right. Um, okay, so we'll get those questions answered. Do we have any other questions? Nobody here in opposition or favor? Okay, so then Mr. Lanchock, which, could you answer either, both of those questions? How close to their house is, is, uh, your shed gonna be? Any closer than your driveway is now?
No.
No, it's not gonna be any closer than.
No, no, not the driveway we're looking at. We have an extended, they extended their driveway, so it's only one foot from our property line right now?
Yeah.
Okay, you made your driveway wider. Yeah, right, okay, all right. But it's within your property.
Carport's still gonna be the same area, regardless of the driveway.
The shed.
Yeah, the shed, I keep thinking.
And so it's going, it will be the five feet
Yeah.
From your property.
It'll be five feet from your property line. Okay. Okay, so the, all right, this isn't gonna turn into a conversation, though, so let's just say that the property line, uh, their shed is gonna be within five feet of your property line.
No, it won't be with.
Well, I mean, a, away from your property line.
Okay, look, I was expecting.
Yo, somebody in the background is giving them questions.
Sorry, go ahead.
All right, so the utility shed is gonna be five feet from your property line. That answers that question. So it's not gonna be any closer to your house than the carport was. Even though they widened the driveway, they are not widening, they are not taking the widened driveway for the whole use of the utility shed. All right, it's gonna be the same width as the carport was. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the carport, right. Okay, so that answers those questions. Um, so do we have any further questions? Uh, do we have a sequel?
We do not need, it's a type two action.
Okay, so then, do we have a motion on this, um, application, which is for an area variance?
Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the area variance, taking into account, um, everything that was included in the application and everything that was stated. Then looking at the, uh, the five factors that are to be balanced when reviewing an area variance. I think that, uh, on balance, the application merits approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and on the motion, um, Katie McLaren?
I vote yes to approve.
Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve, and John Runile? Okay, so you have all three of our votes, so you can probably have a utility shed.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Next case. PLZBA. Special.
Third. Second Street, 102nd Street?
Oh, this is 102nd Street, I'm sorry, yeah, it's just. Okay, PLZBA 2022-0030. Would that might be used, sir? 1702nd Street? No, we've been through this before. You're, you like, you work here. I knew it. So therefore, oh, they're probably on, they could be zooming, right?
Yes, I'm here on the Zoom call.
Okay, got it. 1702nd Street. A B2 community commercial district requires a special use permit and area variances to purp, uh, to convert a two-family residential property to a three-family property. So, Mr. Johnson, you're there, could you introduce yourself and tell us what you want to do, please?
Uh, yeah, so, um, what I have is, um, I bought, uh, a property, it's, uh, 1702nd Street. Used to be Pryor, I believe, like the Elks or Moose Lodge there. Um, we had, had done quite a bit of renovation to the building. Um, with the building department, we were able to get two units there, and then a storage unit that is off to the side. At one time, that was already built, you know, probably by the lodge. Um, so we've been using this for storage now for probably about six months. Um, and we're just looking at the space, saying, this could be another apartment here. Um, so, now the building doesn't look like that anymore, but, um. So, yeah, so, so potentially, uh, off to the left where that brick structure is, uh, is where we would add the third unit, which is roughly 1,000 square foot. Um, the building itself, I believe, totals in like 4,700 square feet. Um, there's really, um, I would say no other commercial use for this particular property. Um, so that's why we've kind of gone to the way of just, uh, converting this to another unit. Um, my partner and I have bought, um, another building up the road that we intend to use for our office, that's been kind of a long-time vacant structure, so we just don't have any commercial uses for that, that particular side anymore.
I will say you did a beautiful job on this building.
Oh, thank you. We're working hard, we, we, we've been, we've been, uh, through Troy quite a bit here, and we actually, um, recently acquired the Browns Printing, uh, Building, so we're hopeful that we can, uh, put our offices, and we have plenty of storage now there. So we have really no, no other use for this, uh, this 1,000 square feet, so we're hoping to occupy it.
Okay, so, special use permit, um, isn't the same as a use permit, so we don't have to go through those, uh, tests. Oh, Katie has it all. Go ahead. Yeah, it's just. Yeah, similar to the area variance, and the, um, the other thing is the three parking spaces required, um, and you not providing any.
Uh, we would utilize the street because, like, ideally, across the road, there's just a huge abandoned, like, va, uh, manufacturing thing, I assume. Like, there's never been
Oh, right.
A shortage for parking on this block, like, it's, it's basically this structure and a single-family house, I believe, that's on the adjoining, uh, I don't know if you wanna say one block between fifth and sixth, but there really is no other, um, structures on there at all. Besides mine and, and this, uh, other single-family house, that sits kind of on a, a large lot.
And I believe this is gonna be, uh, um, that in the district where when the new zoning ordinance comes into effect, um, this will be required, or this will be, um, acceptable. I believe.
Yes, I believe you're right.
Multi-unit?
Yes.
Okay, so, and that's gonna be like in two months or something, isn't it?
Uh, yes, hopefully, Steve would say, uh.
Yeah.
I, I would say, I would say the first Thursday of July, but it won't.
Didn't know you were still listening, Steve, I'm glad I didn't say anything bad about you. Okay. Um, yes, okay, so I mean, I think that that's, uh, something that we can take into consideration. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, do anybody from the board have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
I'd like to see the red Xs disappear.
Right, red X is going away, we love that.
Yeah, that is no more, that, that's definitely gone. It's, uh, occupied.
Right. We don't, not, right. So do we have a motion on the application? Okay, Katie's gonna do it.
Madam Chair, for PLZBA 2022-0030. Um, I move to approve the special use permit based on the following findings of fact. Uh, the proposed project is not, will not cause substantial injury to the value of the surrounding property values. Um, in fact, it will probably raise surrounding property values. Um, the applicant, um, I, is there screening and landscaping criteria for this that hasn't already been addressed through? I'm just using, looking at the findings of fact for the special use permit.
I, I believe this is still on the vacant registry, so this would likely have to go through planning.
Okay.
Um, finally, so they would, they would address the landscaping buffers.
Okay, so can we?
Although if you guys had any stipulations, uh, for the special use permit, you, you, you could certainly state those now.
Okay, so, could I say that, uh, the applicant would agree to meet the landscaping and screening criteria that would be established by planning? And is that true, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, yeah, certainly. I mean, I, I don't know what those requirements would be, um, but, yeah, well, we'll certainly, uh, if there's another step. What's that?
There may well not be any when you get there, it's just.
Yeah, okay. No, there's another step we have to take, we'll, we'll, we'll certainly take whatever processes we have to do to, uh, definitely continue our relationship.
Okay, and the third one is that the special use permit, um, is not expected to impair the public health, safety, convenience, aesthetic quality, or environmental surrounding neighborhood, because, um, it is being used as residence. It is taking a vacant building, um, and putting it to good use, and will be, um, a positive addition to the neighborhood.
Okay, we have a spe, a second on the special use permit, John Runile, and on the, um, application, Jack McCann? Uh, John Runile?
I vote yes.
Kathy Conroy, yes to approve. Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
Okay, so you have the special use permit, now you're gonna have to jump through the hoops for the area variance. We've already discussed.
No problem.
I'm only kidding.
Appreciate it.
Who wants to do that one?
Madam Chair, uh, for PLZBA 2022-0030, um, I move to approve the two area variances, um, one for the maximum density and the other for the parking spaces. Move to the following findings of fact, um, that an undesirable change will not be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or nor a detriment to nearby properties will be created. Um, again, it's taking a vacant building, turning it into, um, residence, um, beautifying the building. Um, and therefore, a, uh, an improvement to the character of the neighborhood. Um, the requested area variance, I don't believe to be substantial. Um, there looks to be plenty of parking. Um, and it's only three spaces that they need relief for. Um, and the maximum density is not as significant as it looks on paper, because it's really going from two to three. I don't believe the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact um, on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood for the same reasons, um, I've given before. So that is a positive motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second? John, seconds, and on the motion, Jack McCann? Uh, John Runile? Kathy Conroy, yes to approve, and Katie McLaren?
Yes.
Okay, so there you go, Mr. Johnson. Good luck to you.
Thank you, have a good night.
I'll say, you too. Next case, PLZBA 2022-0036, 487 Campbell Avenue. B5 Highway Commercial needs area variances. The applicant, Nick Regione, is proposing a three-story mixed-use building with commercial on the first floor and apartments on the second and third floor. And for which he needs area variances. Mr. Regione, are you present?
Yes, how are you?
Good, you?
Thank you, good, thank you.
Okay, so you wanted to tell us what you want to do, please?
Um, yeah, I'll, um, I'll just bring you through real quick, kind of an overview of the project. Um, my name is Derek Ribulis, um, an architect at Catlar Architecture. Um, so Nick Regione, the applicant's with me, and Leonardo DiCanti, uh, with Catlar. Let me just, uh, I guess I'll just give you a quick overview, sorry. Uh, can I share my screen?
Can you show your what?
Share the, my screen?
Sure, if you, if you know how, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I'll try. Okay, so I just brought up the site plan here, uh, project's located at 487 Campbell Ave. Mr. Regione had previously constructed, um, on the site, a one-story Dunkin' Donuts building. So, um, another part, phase two of the project was to be to develop the area to the right of the Dunkin' Donuts into, um, a pad site, um, which has sat vacant for many years, um, trying to find, um, basically suitors for this pad site. So, um, he's come up with, uh, this concept, this three-story mixed-use building, um, which would work for him, uh, to make, uh, the project feasible. Um, so we have this, this three-story mixed-use building, the first floor would be, uh, commercial. The second story would be, uh, apartments, and the third story would be apartments. There'd be four units on each floor, they're all one bedrooms, so eight total one bedrooms. Um, we have already been to the planning board, um, and taken into consideration a lot of their comments. Uh, the, the parking requirement for this project, uh, would be 28 spaces per zoning code. Um, but the early feedback we got from the planning department was that, uh, we needed more green space, less asphalt. So we, um, addressed our comment and reduced the amount of parking on the site. Um, and the site you can see here, um, is pretty constrained. So we're here for one variance for the parking requirement, to reduce it from 28 to 24. Uh, and then the other variance would be the height of the building, because it being three stories, um, and making it, um, commercially, and also for the apartments, uh, rentable and attractive for potential renters. Uh, we have to have a certain ceiling height in each, uh, each, uh, different use. So, um, ours, our height, uh, is 45 feet to the mean roof slope. The zoning allows for 35 feet, so we're looking for 10 feet of, um, relief there. And just looking quickly at the building, you can see what it will look like, if I can zoom in, hold on one second. Uh, here we go. If I can zoom in, hold on one second. Uh, here we go. So here. Shoot, what is my zoom thing? Oh, here it is. So this is the design of the building. This would be the existing Dunkin' Donuts um on the same site. So the first floor here would be the commercial level and then two stories above of residential. Um, and then the style, the architectural style, we feel fits in nicely with the surrounding architecture. There's a lot of sloped roofs. Um, we're using, you know, clapboard siding and stone to accent the building, uh, which uh fits in nicely with the surrounding buildings. And um, and I can show you that in a second. I just want to change one thing here. Stop. Share. Okay, and then let me just show you quickly where we're talking about the Dunkin' Donuts. This is from Google, obviously. Dunkin' Donuts is already constructed here. The proposed three-story building would be built to the east of it here. Um, and looking at the architecture of the surrounding areas, there's a lot of sloped roofs, a lot of siding, a lot of, you know, brick. Um, there's some three-story buildings. Great, yeah, um, in close proximity to the to the project here. Um, this is three-story with brick and sloped roofs. There's another project up the road that uh is a little newer, Park Place, which is three stories with with stone and siding, um, cladding along with sloped roofs. So we feel that the project fits in nicely with the surrounding architecture. Um, and then I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay, do we have any questions for um the applicant? John?
Do you have any experience with with this sort of uh mixed use in uh in that setting, kind of outs- outside of a a main downtown setting? Can you, can you point to any projects locally that we'd be familiar with?
Um, I, I mean, I've uh, we've designed quite a few here in this office. Uh, on Route 2 in Latham, Pure Plaza has commercial on the first floor and apartments on the second and third. Um, but in Troy, uh, I haven't done anything in Troy. Do you have anything that's similar?
Uh, not, I have commercial right next, close to that site, but uh, well, yeah, you know, I covered the old, the right across the street from the site, uh, the car wash. I took that dilapidated building and we do have an apartment above it. So that's commercial and that's only right across the street from that Campbell Ave.
This one here?
Yeah, right there. I have three stores, 6,000 square feet with an apartment above.
Okay, do we have any other questions?
Do you have a commercial tenant in mind? Just curious, really.
You know, right now, uh, like I said, we have a couple bites on it, but we need to, I I feel uh, we need to construct it. You know, it's kind of building, they they will come.
Yeah.
And and I did a similar project over in Latham with no tenants, and I put up the building and and, you know, thankfully they came.
I'm just thinking, these tenants in an apartment building like this, they've got Dunkin' Donuts, they've got Damael's Liquor, they've got Combeeds, they'll never need the weed.
Life is good.
Yeah.
Um. Anybody else have any questions? Is there anybody here from the public to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, so we have, um, we need a secret on this one?
Uh, Madam Chair for PLZBA 2022-0036. Um, I'd ask the board to find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second? John Normile, seconds. And on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now, do we have a motion on the application for the area variances? Building height and parking spaces. John?
Yeah, um, Madam Chair. In regards to 2022-0036. Make um pardon me, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the area variances. Again, uh, this is based on what was submitted in the application and the information that's been presented tonight here at the meeting. Uh, this is taking into account the the balance of five points under an area variance. There will be no undesirable change in the neighborhood, no detriment to nearby properties. In fact, it, by bringing in uh residents and new commercial tenants should increase foot traffic at the businesses. Uh, the the benefit sought by the applicant in order to to develop the lot. This mixed use, you can't, there's there's no other way to bring that kind of benefit. The the requested variances are not substantial. They're being, they're putting up pro- our buildings on the property that are in keeping with the uh the surrounding buildings. And the variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And in unbalance, it does not appear that the life's difficult.
Okay, do we have a second on the um motion? Jack McCann, seconds on the motion. Katie McLaren?
I vote yes to approve.
Uh, Jack McCann? Kathy Conroy, yes to approve, and John Normile? Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next case, PLZBA 2022-0033, 3154 Sixth Avenue. An R4 urban neighborhood residential meeting to high density, the A variance B. Um, requested the applicant QIMA LLC is proposing to build a four-unit multi-family on this vacant property. Um, is the applicant here?
Yes, hi.
Hi, okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Manuel. Thank you for reviewing the application. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
Really?
Uh, let me know if you could see it or if there's any issue.
Yeah, no, that looks nice.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you so much. So um I am looking to build a four-unit residential property on this lot. And to give a little bit of context, um, this lot is extremely small, is much smaller than the surrounding neighborhood. And uh, from recent, from the research I've done, it's always existed. It it's not a recent condition. It's always been this way in Troy. And currently, Detroit Community Land Bank owns this property, and I'm in contract to purchase it. And part of the agreement is for me to just ensure that I get the zoning requirements approved and then close on the contract. Um, in relation to the neighborhood uh that I've noticed and in the past, there used to be a single-family residence on this property. It was vacant for quite a long time. And that is why Detroit Community Land Bank ended up purchasing it and demolishing the existing structure. So right now, the property is vacant. And I have a few photos of what it used to look like here. Uh, this was the existing property that used to be there for quite a number of years. And then currently, over here on my right, it's the existing state. And just to give a sense of the surrounding properties, I have here just a collection of images. Here, what you'll see is the proposed property, the the rendering that you saw beforehand, and then the adjacent properties over. And and the area, the the variances I'm seeking mostly applied to the density. Um, what I'm allowed to do currently right now is a single family. I'm looking to do four units. Um, because of the size of the lot, which is only about 60 feet deep. Um, actually, I'm sorry, it it's only about, let me just find the the number here. Yeah, it's only about 25 feet deep by 60, 62 feet deep. Um, I'm only allowed to do one family, but I am able to build quite high, just like the other townhouses available. Um, and just to give you a sense, many of the majority properties around are two or three families, and some of them are six families, including the adjacent property next to me. And then also here, in terms of um front and side yards uh variances, it's a very old neighborhood. A lot of the properties abut uh their property lines. So this image here, you see, I have my property here circled. And then on the right, you can notice just uh with these red markings, each one that I highlighted, where the property goes right up until the sidewalk. So in terms of disrupting the neighborhood or changing the fabric, I I think my property aligns pretty much what 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 is existing in the area and um not necessarily disrupting any of the neighborhood. And that is basically a summary of my proposal here.
Okay, do we have anybody to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Do we have any questions of the applicant on the board?
Um, I wondered, are these going to be like fair market value apartments? Are they luxury apartments? Are they, you know?
No, so.
Families or?
Yeah, so all units will be two bedrooms. Um, and similar to the previous proposal, we are looking for young professionals who live and work in the area. And actually, part of the agreement with Detroit Community Land Bank is to make these units um not luxury, high-end uh that are unaffordable to the area, but there is a um, an income cap to to these in the units. Um, so they are accessible to the residents that live in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, there is one item I'd like to um clarify. Uh, there are a number of there, it's the thought for for area, um, one of those being the side setback. So our code requires a side setback of 10 feet. That's to both property lines. All right, um, so when describing, when describing the relief as nine feet, um, that should be revised to be 18 feet, if you think about its relief of nine feet on both sides of the building.
Even though it's on the corner?
Who's gonna say it's on the corner, though, right?
Well, yes, but we we interpret, we interpret the minor street as a side.
As a property.
Right, but nevertheless, you're not sitting on top of a house next door.
Correct, that's correct.
Was that the only one?
That was it.
That you wanted to speak to?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do we have any other further questions for the applicant? I mean, this is impressive to me.
Thank you.
Nice use of the uh, an empty lot, I would say. Katie, did you have something you wanted to ask or say?
I'm just, why not three?
Yeah, uh, definitely.
For a lot of, you know, the area variances, um. Just out of.
Yeah, definitely, I could speak to that. Uh, we did look at financially, I I'm doing this project uh also with my partner, my wife, um, who was a financial guru of this. And the three units we did look at, um, i- in terms of the return on the project and just to being able to maintain it, we do feel four is the best use of the property. Um. We are also still adhering to the height requirements, and since we could fit four and still accommodate, you know, nice units and that are desirable to the area and to the tenants that would hopefully live there. Um, it provides us with enough income to really maintain the property and not just do we end with that, we are invested in this property and we don't want to just simply build and leave. We're really invested in hopefully the success and long-term longevity of this property.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any further questions? No? Okay, then can we have a secret?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair for uh PLZBA 2022-0033. Um, I'd recommend the board find this to propose to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second? John, seconds. And on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Do we have a motion on the application?
No, no, I don't, I, um, Madam Chair, I.
Let me do it. I can do it. Yeah, if you do. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, I make a motion, a positive motion to grant the area variances um on the property located at 3154 Sixth Avenue. I feel that the uh variances that are, that are being uh requested, let me get my piece of paper here. Um, I don't believe an undesirable change in the neighborhood will take place. It's an empty lot. Anything that can be done to improve the um appearance, I shouldn't say, atmosphere, whatever of that neighborhood, I would think would be beneficial. Um. The benefits sought by the applicant in many of, for many of these variances can't be achieved in any other way. The variances are not, for the most part, um, that substantial relief of two feet, four feet. Given the 19 feet for the side setback, as I said, or 18 feet, I'm sorry. Um, and you're at, the one side of the property is on the corner, so that uh has to be taken into consideration. It's not exactly on top of a house next door. Um, there's zero parking spaces proposed, but once again, it's on a corner, it's on a main street, and um, I believe that not having the eight parking spaces off um off-street will not be a significant uh detriment to the property. Um, I also feel that, as I said earlier, the variance will not have an adverse effect, impact impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. If anything, it will be an increase. And as the applicant explained, the other properties in the neighborhood, um, the uh four-feet height is not really, or I'm sorry, the four-story height is also um revisited in many of the other properties in the area. So with all of that in mind, I make a positive motion to approve. Do we have a second? John Normile, seconds. On the motion, Jack McCann? Katie McLaren?
Um, I vote no.
John Normile?
I vote yes.
And Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve. So you have your variances. Good luck. Next case.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. Um, PLZBA 2022-0018, 411 Ninth Street. Two-family residential neighborhood area variance. The applicant Sheena Sager is proposing to construct an attached carport and deck. I might also say, Sheena, that I think the tense of the verb is wrong in that it's already up.
Yes, it, yes, it is.
Okay, so do you want to uh introduce yourself and tell us what you wanted to do before you did it?
Um, yes, so I um consulted a local contractor. It was at the height of COVID and.
Excuse me, excuse me, could you just introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. My name is Shayna Sager. I'm the owner of a duplex on um, couple of duplexes on Ninth Street. And this is for 411 Ninth. I live in the building.
Okay, and so go ahead. I'm sorry I interrupted you. What is it you wanted to do?
Um, so when I met with the contractor, um, there had been a previous existing carport that was taken down at the beginning of 2019. And that was a um dilapidated structure, and it was built on on four-by-fours rather than, it just wasn't sturdy and it, and they took it down before I purchased it. And so I met with the contractor because I did want a carport. Um, but I wanted one that was big enough to. But I wanted one that was big enough to, like, drive a big truck under or like a mini camper for when I take road trips. So I met with him, he designed it. Told me that because of COVID, that he couldn't pull permits right now, but not to worry about it. And, you know, at the end of the job, I talked to my dad and he basically said, yeah, you need to see if you can fill out something online. So I did. And that is when I got in touch with code enforcement. And they said, you know, you need site plans. I can show you the document I have that shows the, there it is, the previous carport. And so they said I needed site plans and I got that done. The actual footers of, the new footers of the deck are like six inches closer to the fence area than it was before. But the overhang is actually where that additional foot is. So both of these were built quite, quite close to the fence. And literally, it's only six inches more because the footers, newer footers have to be dug deeper. And there was too much rock, the contractor said, and that it wouldn't be an issue because it's also considered a second-story deck. So I've gone through everything with trip to try to come into compliance. And my neighbors think the current carport looks great and that it's well-built. They have no complaints. And I'm actually speaking with the owner of 407 to purchase that building as well. So I understand I did not do my due diligence. I have, I have no reason, really, I do have an excuse. I was going through a difficult health condition at the time as well as trying to do this. I just wanted an outdoor space where I could be safe without being at risk of COVID. Maybe later down the line, turn it into a deck. But, there you have it. That's, I've really got no good justification. I did not do my due diligence in this case.
Well, we can always blame it on COVID, you know, if any not doing what they should have done. And sir, I mean, for all of your mea culpa's, if we're asking for four feet, relief of four feet, I don't think personally that, you know, and you're not trying to make up a story as to why you didn't do it. So that's always appreciated when somebody's being honest. Do we have anybody in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Do we have any questions from the board?
I do have photos of the completed deck, if you want me to show you that. Versus what, what is there now?
Yeah, it looks really nice.
Oh, you have a picture of the new one?
Well, I dropped by.
Oh, okay.
We do have due diligence here, too.
Yeah, thank you so much.
It really, it looks nice and, you know, let's just not be foolish about
I will say code enforcement's inspected the deck. I think they only have a few minor comments.
Oh, good. Okay, well, I would hope not if she got a real contract to do the work, I would hope he did it. But you never know with contractors. Yeah, right, exactly. Katie, did you want to say, yeah, exactly?
No, I was just asking that this goes, if we were to grant this, it would go with the property. So if something were to happen and needed to be replaced, they could dig in the same place, right?
Okay, do we have anything further to discuss or are we ready for a motion? Do we have a secret? Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Yeah, I'm looking at the wrong one. Okay, so that being the case, do we have a motion on the application?
Madam Chair, for PLZBA 2022-0018, I would make a move to approve the area variance for the side setback. I do not believe an undesirable change has been produced in the character of the neighborhood. In fact, it looks like quite a nice addition to the neighborhood. Again, the benefits sought by the applicant can't be achieved by a different method because at this point, it's already done. I don't believe it's a substantial variance. And again, I don't believe it's going to have any adverse effect or impact on the neighborhood.
Okay, we have a second? All right, Jack McCann and on the motion, Jack McCann? John Normile?
Yes, to approve.
Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve. And I will also say that I would have voted yes to approve if you hadn't already put it up. I mean, I, you know, that's, I don't think we were voting because it's already there, is my point.
True, and I didn't mean
Katie, no, no, you didn't.
I vote yes to approve.
Okay, so we have four yeses, zero nos. You have your approval.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Good night.
Good night. Last case, PLZBA 2022-0039, 37 First Street. Before Central Commercial District, area variance is required. The applicant, Russell Brooks, is proposing to construct a carriage house on his property. The minimum side and rear accessory setback required is five feet, zero feet proposed. The applicant here, oh, where'd you come from?
He's been sitting back there this whole
Stop it, you've been there the whole time? Oh, my gosh, okay, go ahead. I will say we got a nice email from your neighbors offering their support of your project, saying really nice things about you, too. Do we have anybody here other than the neighbors who are not, but sent their email to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? John?
Aaron, is there a difference in definition of carriage house instead of garage?
I do not believe our code distinguishes between those two items. In fact, I don't think we define a carriage house in our code. We do define garage, we do define accessory dwelling units of things of that nature, but we don't define a carriage house.
Okay, so by calling this a carriage house
It's showing that you're living in downtown Troy as opposed to Lansing.
It should essentially be considered an accessory structure that, right, that has a residence, could potentially have a residence on the second floor. I don't know if that's the proposal now, but it could.
Okay, I guess that's where I was going. If, if there was a plan to put a residence inside the building anywhere, that would be another application?
The creation of a dwelling unit would require, yes. And likely, that would, without having looked at that specific case, it would likely require a density variance or some of the variances that we've seen this evening. Certainly a variance for parking spaces, things of that nature.
I just wanted to get that out.
It is, that's not your intention, though, right? It's strictly for
Hang on, I can't hear the guy. Jack, I can't hear.
Right, okay.
In which case, we consider it like the shed at 32 Manning, right? He may store his vehicle in there, he may store his lawnmower, but it's
But if he stores his modern lawn there, then we got a problem, right?
He's probably got a bigger lawn.
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah. That's the way I think of, I mean, you know, I assume, you know, you were going to use it as a garage, as a garage, you know, yeah. Okay, do we have any? John and Jack, do you have any other questions for the applicant? No? Katie?
I don't, and there's no secret needed on this.
Right. Okay, so do we have a motion on the application itself?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a positive motion to grant the variance, please.
Okay.
Making the motion, taking into consideration everything that was included in the application and what's been presented here tonight in discussion at the meeting. Applying the criteria for an area variance, I believe that the project passes the balancing test for the requested variance.
Okay, do we have a second? Jack McCann seconds on the motion, Jack McCann? Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
Kathy Conroy, yes to approve? John Normile? Okay, good luck, you're all set. Okay.
Chair, before we move to the close of the meeting, the gentleman that had property at 162 Ninth Street just sent over are being placed in front of you now.
Oh, wow.
This is his funding agency describing the issue with the three-family needing to have that in, essentially confirmed or in writing.
And is this sufficient for what?
That's your call.
Okay.
Okay, so now we got to take a second to read it.
Right? That's our call.
Okay.
All right, we talked about how
I will, for those in attendance, we make this part of the record
Okay.
as well, this will go in the meeting minutes.
So we either have to, wait a minute, let's just step back to that one. All right, so this basically affects the first criteria for a use variance. Does it add financial part of it? He can't get that's the sticking point, so to speak?
That's the reason that it was tabled. So based on the information that was provided to this applicant, he obtained this letter, notified, Aaron, if the board wishes to recall that case, they can tonight.
Right, that's what we want to do, but, and this letter references to A.
We, but we have to decide whether or not it's competent.
Correct, but we're only looking at A, is my point.
Well, we kind of discussed
Because we discussed the others, that's right. Yeah, this letter, this letter references A, is my point. Yes, right. So do we need, does everybody read it, the letter? And how do we feel about it? Do we have to reopen the case? Number one. Right, in reference to PLZBA 2022-0031, property at 162 Ninth Street, this case was tabled earlier this evening and we're now reopening it, or do we have to vote reopen?
We can reopen it.
Okay, we're now reopening the case because the applicant did receive evidence from, supporting evidence, I should say, from his funding corporation as to the financial ramifications, shall we say? Whether or not we want to, what we needed to know from a financial perspective is for whether or not we wanted to grant the use variance. Do the members of the board feel they've had enough time to look at the letter? And do they, do we feel that the letter does in fact speak to the financial aspects of the variance and it's sufficient?
I believe it does.
And you believe it's sufficient? Okay, so that being the case for the use variance, we have to move on then to speak to a use variance, a whole use variance.
Well, we have to vote separately on the two
Oh, that's the area, right? Yeah. I mean, that is the use case, right?
You also did not take an action on secret.
Right. All right.
Okay, so let's do the secret, okay?
So, Madam Chair, in PLZBA 2022-0031, I'd ask the board to find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second? Okay, John Normile seconds and on the secret, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now, do we have a motion on the application itself or the use variance?
Madam Chair, for PLZBA 2022-0031, I move to approve the use variance based on the following findings of fact. I do not believe, especially in light of the new financial information that we received, that the applicant is not able to obtain a reasonable return within allowed use. There was a unique hardship to the property here in that it was sold as a three-unit. But only had what would I call it? Only had a variance, I guess, for two units. This variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I think it would just have the opposite effect. And also, this hardship was not self-created. Again, because it was sold to the applicant as a three-unit building.
Okay, we have a second on that motion? John Normile seconds on the motion, Jack McCann? Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
Kathy Conroy, yes to approve? John Normile? Okay, so you have the use variance. You're halfway there. Now for the area variance.
Madam Chair, for PLZBA 2022-0031, I move that we approve the area variance for the maximum density and for the parking relief. Again, an undesirable change to the neighborhood or nor a detriment to nearby properties are going to be created by these variances. In fact, you know, I think it's going to be a nice, especially with an owner-occupied residence. It will be a nice addition to the neighborhood. We've already established that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by another feasible means. I don't believe the area variances are substantial. We're talking about three parking spaces and one dwelling unit. And again, they will not have any adverse Um, and again, they will not have any um adverse impact on the neighborhood or the environmental conditions in the neighborhood.
Okay, do we have a second on that one? John? Normile and on the motion, Jack McCann? Um, John Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve, and Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
Okay, so there you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good field.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Might want to take your um, um, homestead funding guy out to dinner.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, good luck. Do we have a motion to, um, adjourn? Yes, Katie and John, okay, all in favor, aye.
Thank you.
Time to go. I can do, well, it would have been if we had a table. So.